Good evening, everyone. It is 6:04 and I'd like to call the Ellington Board of Education meeting to order. I would ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, this was September. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, are we skipping it all together? We're skipping it all together?
What's that?
Are we skipping it all together?
Uh, we can quickly remind the board of, uh, we can quickly remind the board of the action item for the acceptance of the grant even though the recognition can't be here.
Okay, so, um, special recognition, just a quick reminder, um, who's here? You want to speak on it? Scott?
Absolutely. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see all of you from last night. Um, we have a special recognition here for EHS teacher Kim Laduke, uh, who put in a next-generation personal finance grant, uh, for $10,000. Uh, she's one of our outstanding teachers, took the time to write the grant to be able to, uh, improve the programming at the high school. Uh, we are going to acknowledge her at special recognition here tonight. Unfortunately, she, at the last minute, had something personal happen and she wasn't able to come. Uh, but you will notice, uh, that in the action items, uh, there should be, um, a motion for you to consider later in the meeting, uh, to accept the $10,000 grant.
Thank you. Um, agenda item C, the board chairs report. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to, uh, let everyone know that the shared services committee was reenacted, um, as of August 9th, the Board of Selectmen meeting. So, the committee will consist of four citizens of Ellington that are not employed by the town or the Board of Education. These citizens will be selected by the Board of Selectmen's personal personnel committee, excuse me, who will then make their recommendation to the full Board of Selectmen, who will then make the final decision on appointments. Any citizen that's interested in joining the shared services committee should complete a statement of interest on the local town website. In addition to the four citizens, there will be one Board of Selectmen member, one Board of Finance member, and one Board of Education member. At this time, I respectfully volunteer to be that Board of Education member for the shared services committee and would entertain a motion to recommend this to the first select woman.
Second.
Second, first by Jen, seconded by Chris.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. On Monday, September 20th, the Connecticut State Department of Education announced that all local districts' plans for the use of their SRTU funds have been approved. For everyone's information, of the $492 million that the state received, the Ellington Board of Education received $400,000. Those funds are being used currently in part for our new bases program, which was established for students who need social-emotional support on a tiered system to increase their well-being. Money well-spent. Thank you. We are moving on to Citizens and Staff Forum at this time. I would like to remind everyone that is speaking this evening that there is a five-minute limit, uh, to the time that they can speak. Uh, we will call the speakers up in the order in which we received them. Uh, we appreciate any objective comments on school operations and programs. Uh, we will ask there be no defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students or against any person connected to the Ellington Public Schools. This is a time reserved for the Board of Education to hear from the public. We appreciate you coming forward. It is not a time for Board members to respond. If it is appropriate, administrative, district administration will follow up with the individuals. Thank you. That being said, our first speaker on the list is Kristin Millen. Kristin Millen? Okay, our second speaker is Beverly Russo.
Good evening. I commend you for following the Constitution and allowing everyone the freedom to speak tonight. Thank you very much for that. I come to petition this Board of Education for a redress of grievances. Specifically, I ask that you vote tonight to stop the abuse of Ellington children. I'd like to share a few truths. A mandate is defined as an authoritative command or instruction. Mandates are associated with kings, queens, and tyrants. Two, the Board of Ed can vote now to remove masks, stop the CRT, the SCL, the gender identity, and the requirement to take an experimental shot that's still in testing till 2024. They can, but I'm betting that they won't. Why? Because according to state law, which I've had a chance to research, the local Board of Ed, and I quote, "Local Boards of Education are not agents of towns. They are creatures of the state." So, they follow every political narrative that is developed by the state, like masks and the shots. Number four, superintendents. Yes, I was on the Board of Education, and I did learn about superintendents. They're very good at calming down everybody, parents and teachers and Board members, so no action is taken outside of the prescribed agenda. Superintendents do have allegiance to the state, and they belong to state and national associations. Board members, I just wonder how many times the superintendent tells you how things need to be done according to the state. When I was on the Board, it was quite a lot. Teachers' unions. Teachers' unions are in place to protect bad teachers and promote an agenda. Good teachers and great teachers, they don't need unions. They are really good, those really good teachers want what is best for the children. My time on the Board of Education taught me that teachers' unions are not, they don't do what's best for children. The unions, I'm not talking people, I'm talking unions. Teachers' unions in, just recently, wanted no school, and they got it for quite a while in these past 18 months. Unions are powerful. They control what happens in schools. And all of this happens behind closed, locked doors. You cannot see and you will not know what happens in a locked building. Have you seen what's happening across the country? Parents are demanding school boards be responsive to parents and citizens. They talked about an AP teacher, not in this town, across the country, who is indoctrinating students to communism and giving extra credit for going to BLM and Antifa rallies. Parents have been reading to school boards, the pornographic books in elementary school libraries, that are detailing things to seven- and 10-year-old children that would get any private citizen arrested, but it's promoted in some schools. There are parents who remove and replace school boards. School boards are being served arrest warrants during meetings, and students refusing, and students around the country are refusing to wear masks. And then there's the Fauci emails, the WikiLeaks, the McAfee links, and lots, lots more. In summary, the Board of Education, the union, and the superintendent all have their own agenda, which aligns with the state, which in my world means politics. Politics does not care about what is best for individuals. Politics is about power and control and money, not health and safety for citizenry and masses. The Constitution and the Bill of Rights gives power to the people, and I carry it with me all the time. Every one of you here has the right to require this Board of Ed to immediately fix this justifiable cause for protest. You all see the Board of Education has overstepped its authority of education and is now acting as a medical authority, requiring masks and experimental shots for staff and students, and these shots are experimental until 2024. Remember, a mandate is only an authoritative command or an instruction. It is not the law. Laws are made by legislatures, but even laws made by legislatures are illegal if they violate the rights in the Constitution. To everyone here, I say know your rights, stand up for your rights, and protect your children. You have the right to ask them to vote tonight, to require them to vote tonight. So, I ask you, I, my grievance tonight is that you need to vote to make masks optional, not mandatory. I understand many people are afraid, and we need to play into the effuses.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Caitlin Scott.
Maybe it is better to take it down. I could just take it down, could you? Hi, everybody. Oh, hello. I'm speaking here today on behalf of my son. He is four years old. Um, he has the possibility of attending this public school system next year. I truly believe that masks should be optional. Um, I just can't understand how we're still masking up children as young as two years old. Um, I can't believe that they have to sit through an eight-hour day of school completely masked up. They can't see their classmates' smiles, or their teachers, for that matter. We understand the risks now, since it's been over a year. The CDC's website even says, and I quote, "Children with no pre-existing conditions have a 0.0008% chance of being hospitalized with COVID-19." Also, the most prevalent conditions conclude obesity at 37.8% and chronic lung disease at 18%. This, to me, states that they've outlined exactly who we should be protecting. I've also found a pediatric study from China, which was dated in June of 2020. That states most cases were mild, but much fewer were severe as in critical cases, at 5.8%. Adults at 18.5%. The evidence suggests that adult patients may have more severe outcomes with COVID. We all understand this. So, according to this study, they've known since 2020 that children do not become severely ill with COVID-19. Adults now actually have the choice to become vaccinated against this and protect themselves. I believe in freedom of choice, whether it's a mask or a vaccine. We shouldn't have to co-parent with the government or any school officials. Our children are not sick until proven healthy. I'll leave you with a quote. Ronald Reagan once said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same, or one day, we'll spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States, where men were once free. This mask mandate should end. It's time to let the kids be kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Joy Davis-Fickenschild.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm here for a different cause. Um, my, my firstborn went from the middle school to the high school, and I was just blindsided with there was no school bus for students for extracurricular activities. And my husband and I were scrambling, oh my God, because we were spoiled in the middle school. Um, before COVID, they had two buses that transported the kids who had extracurricular activities in the middle school home, and they bust them home around 4:00 PM, and most families in this town have two full-time working parents to afford the cost of living. And so, we were, so my son went to high school, and he's a freshman, and he's playing soccer, and I was like, oh my God, there's, there's no after-school bus. I just assumed there would be a bus to bring home the football players, the soccer players, the volleyball players, um, I think that's, yeah, girls' soccer, boys' soccer. So, I made a few calls, and I guess the high school has never had this. So, I'm here to please ask if some budget money could be shifted. Um, I know the middle school has had it now for three years. They have two buses, um, that transport the extracurricular activities students every day. Um, on average, it costs $65 an hour to run the school bus. That's the driver, the gas, their time. And I, and I know that there's, I made a few calls, there's hopefully a poll coming out to just send out to the, the parents to see what kind of need there is, and I guarantee you, there will be a drastic need, um, because all these parents are scrambling. Can you pick up my kid? Um, I got held up at work. Can you please help me out? So, I'm just here to encourage you all to just keep the ball rolling. I know it's a lot of money, um, but I think it would be beneficial, not only for the kids this year, but for the future of this town of Ellington, because a lot of us have extra, you know, multiple children that are coming up the pipeline. And both of my kids are very athletic, so, um, and I know I'm not alone in this. And on a side note, it's not just the athletes. It's for the kids who are doing drama, and theater, and chorus, and band, all these wonderful activities. And it's proven that the more your kid signs up for extracurricular activities, the better they do in school. It makes them more excited to go to school, to be with their friends, to, to be a better student, a better, well-rounded individual. So, um, that's my plea here tonight, is to just keep that ball rolling, and I'd really appreciate it. I know a lot of parents would as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Roy.
Hi, good evening. It's been one month since our last Board of Ed meeting. So, thank you to everyone on our Board, um, and our wonderful superintendent, Scott Nichol, for our proposed plan of allowing masks to be a choice. I'd be interested in knowing our next steps if the governor extends his emergency mandates in less than one week. So, at the past few meetings, we've been up here kind of doing the same thing, which is important, um, but we've provided endless articles and information from credible sources for you to review on your time. So, at this point, waiting all month for five minutes to speak, it is important, but I do feel it's time for more open conversations as a community. So, while I might just not be speaking to the Board, I'm more speaking to our community tonight as well. I believe that most parents truly want what is best for their children and their families, whether we agree or disagree on specific topics. I believe that choice should be respected, as it always has been. Families have always done much different things than other families, and it's never been an issue before. It's time to allow our parents to make the best choice for their families. For some, that means continuing to wear a mask, and that's fine. For others, it means no longer wearing a mask. There are too many gray areas of this situation, as we've been hearing for months. So, I'm here to encourage you to take steps in order to allow us, Ellington parents, the choice, the choice for our children to wear a mask or not wear a mask, regardless of vaccination status, because I'm sure you're aware, but that's probably the next steps here, will be unmasking, depending on if your child has had the vaccine or not. Um, there's a lot of talk about that. So, the, um, okay, so right now, everybody's saying, probably thinking, well, if you're not vaccinated, you're spreading the virus. So, vaccinated individuals are also spreading the virus. That's been proven. The time has come for our children to have a choice. So, here we are, less than one week away from Governor Lamont extending his emergency mandates. There's no emergency here in Connecticut, so what is our plan here in Ellington? As a community, let's get more comfortable with one another and start chatting together. Let's dig just a bit deeper and have real useful conversations. Between five minutes per month standing here and all of us typing and researching on social media, I really long for the days of community and real-life conversations. Let's face it, none of us will ever agree on everything, but if we do work together to to find a middle ground for all Ellington families on both sides of this unnecessary division, I have faith that things will end up okay for everyone involved. So let's bring back the old-fashioned days of conversation in a neighborly community. If things don't start heading in the right direction soon, then let's go rogue, as a board member inquired about in the past. Let's support each other through the unexpected obstacles ahead of us, and let's be there for one another, even if on opposing sides of all this division. I hope that as neighbors and parents, we can find that middle ground soon. I hope that as a government-funded public school, you can find the support to step away from the mandates as much as possible and allow us, Ellington parents, the choice of our children, wearing a mask or not. Our children should have never been a part of this exchange of funding. This should have never continued to happen. Ellington can be a part of the worst stories in Connecticut history, or a part of the best stories in Connecticut history, and you all right here have a say in their future. So the time for action has already passed. You have our support. We mentioned that continuously at the past three board meetings, and we're all still standing here. As a reminder, I encourage you to look at the facts, not follow the fear-mongering news. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Gary Gardner.
I'm against mask mandates for my children. This does not mean that I'm anti-mask, anti-vax, or antisocial distancing. I believe that all of those things are up to the individual. If someone feels that a mask will offer them protection, then by all means, wear it. I'm not here to stop them. If someone wants to be vaccinated, then that is their choice. I strongly oppose forcing people, especially children, to comply with these mandates. These choices should be left up to the child's parent, not the governor, the school board, or other parents. I shouldn't have to fight for my children's right to breathe fresh air, yet here I am. Children have been largely unaffected by this virus, and that's a good thing, a blessing. In over a year and a half, very few children have died from COVID, and it's rare for them to transmit it to other people. However, there are parents who feel that their child is going to get gravely ill or transmit the virus to them and possibly make them just as sick. What I don't understand is, if you are truly that afraid, why are you sending your child to school with nothing but a piece of cloth to protect them? You're telling me that you believe the difference between life and death for you and your child is a spit-filled cloth mask? It seems inconceivable to me that you would risk your child's life like that. If I was genuinely afraid of my children getting seriously ill, they would not be in school. In fact, none of our kids would be if this was the case. Instead, you're using your child's mask to gain acceptance points with your politically-aligned group. You're not afraid for your child's life, you're afraid of being ostracized by your tribe. And I'll tell you this, my child's freedom to breathe fresh air doesn't start where your fear ends. So stop projecting your fear onto other people's children. My child is not responsible for your health, and you are not responsible for my child's health. This board needs to remove this mandate and let the children's parents decide what is best for them. That is part one of what I want to say. The Union for the Ellington School System, the Connecticut Education Association, CEA, is an affiliate of the National Education Association, the NEA. The NEA has recently added this business item to their agenda. Share and publicize through existing channels information already available on critical race theory, what it is and what it is not. Have a team of staffers for members who want to learn more and fight back against anti-CRT rhetoric. Provide an already created in-depth study that critiques empire, white supremacy, anti-blackness, racism, patriarchy, cis hetero-patriarchy, capitalism, ableism, anthropocentrism, and other forms of power and oppression at the intersections of our society, and that we oppose attempts to ban critical race theory. And who gave this board the right to try to indoctrinate my children with CRT? And don't tell me you're not implementing it. You're even teaching it in kindergarten with the social and emotional learning, the one that you brought up. How about the social justice after-school program in the Ellington Middle School, run by a teacher that I know supports CRT? My question is this, why have you not informed parents that the Ellington Middle School is supporting CRT? The teachers, the union, and the people on this board no longer want a curriculum centered around math, science, history, or life skills. They want a curriculum centered around social justice. They want to program your children to become social and political activists. To all the parents, this should be alarming to you. You need to start asking your children what they're being taught, and if they're too young to articulate that information, you need to ask their teachers exactly what they're being taught.
Our next speaker is Ken Bajol.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Ellington Board of Education, Superintendent Nichols, and other leaders of the Ellington Public School System for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Ken Bajol, and I'm a doctor for cancer with children, but more importantly, I'm a father of a kindergartner. I requested to speak tonight to urge the Board of Education and the Superintendent to continue the mask usage in the school system. The effectiveness and potential harms of masks has been debated. Many of the studies claiming their ineffectiveness and harms have been flawed, retracted by the publisher, or are not peer-reviewed, meaning that those who work in your field have not reviewed the study to ensure its validity and study methods. The leading groups advocating for children, such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, stress the use of masks along with other measures to ensure children and staff can return to school safely and remain in school. Masks have been demonstrated to be effective in decreasing the transmission of respiratory illnesses, and their uses is supported by all experts in public health, epidemiology, and infectious diseases. I understand parents have concerns about mask usage affecting their child language development. The American Speech, Language, and Hearing Associations, the leader in language development, also acknowledges this concern. However, they go on to say there's no evidence that it's affecting children's language development and support mask usage. Children belong in school with every layer of safety we can provide. This includes basic mitigation strategies such as hand washing, mask usage, respiratory etiquette, and physical distancing. No singular strategy is 100% effective, but their use in combination to drive down transmission, every decrease, even a small percentage, counts because the cases can count. The best examples would be your mortgage. If you decrease the interest rate by even a tiny percentage, you can save a lot of money because of the counterbalance. We implement these strategies to keep kids from contracting COVID. The claim that children are not affected by COVID-19 is false. The percentage of children is increasing. In the past month, nearly 1 million children have tested positive for COVID and represent over 25% of new cases. Children constitute about 25% of the population. The rate and likelihood of hospitalization continues to increase and is affecting children of all ages. Even after initial COVID infection, regardless of hospitalization, children are experiencing multi-inflammatory syndrome of children, or MITSI. This condition can be severe with damage to the child's heart, lung, kidneys, and the development of blood clots. As someone who has cared for these children, some who are critically ill and fighting for their lives, COVID infection and subsequent complications can have lasting effects on children. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, 200 children have died from the flu, while there have been approximately 500 pediatric COVID-19 deaths. Sadly, Connecticut has had five of these pediatric COVID deaths. This would certainly be higher if it was not for the extraordinary efforts of the doctors and nurses that are state hospitals, and I would like to publicly thank them for their untiring dedication to saving the lives of children. But we must not trivialize this number. Five deaths may not seem like very many, but that means five families in Connecticut buried their children. There are five forever empty bedrooms in Connecticut because of COVID. As someone who has told families that their child is going to die, or having to tell the parents their child has died, every death is one too many. I've dedicated my adulthood training for and now practicing pediatric medicine. I serve as an advocate to promote the health, safety, and well-being of all children. If masks impose serious infectious, developmental, and other health risks, why would I recommend it with immunocompromised cancer patients I care for? Why would I place their lives at risk? Why would I place my own children at risk? My roles as pediatrician offers me the unique and humbling opportunity, but also the solemn duty to care for children and their families. However, this duty cannot be limited to the children I see in my office. Thus, I would like to extend my expertise in pediatric medicine to be of service to the Board of Education and the Ellington School System, not only during these uncertain times, but in the future, into the future also. I thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your service to the community.
Our next speaker is Dawn Winans.
I'm coming before you to ask you to please stop the mask mandate. Our children are suffering mentally and emotionally. I work in a daycare, and it is so sad to see all these three-year-olds having to wear a mask eight hours a day, except when they are napping or outside. Here we are as teachers, trying to teach them the ABCs, and they can't even see our face or hear the sounds very good because everything is being so muffled. We, the people, need to stand up and fight for our children. So why are we putting up with the mask mandates? It's not mandate, it's mandated we wear them, but mandating is not a law. If you want your child to come to school wearing a face covering, that is your choice. I choose not to send my grandson to school with a face covering. It's abuse and inhumane. We are supposed to be the land of the free, and it's turning into the land of socialism. We, the people, need to stand up to the governor and the state and not let him rule our kids and force them to wear masks and get vaccinated. Our kids, our choice, not our kids, government's choice. So please let us stand up for the rights of our kids. They count on us to help them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Josephiak.
My wife and I were attending the Hartford Hospital Annual Black and Red Gala. Andy Grammer was the headliner. Earlier that week, I had been discussing my concerns with my wife regarding the outbreak of a respiratory virus similar to SARS-CoV-1 that I had caught wind of earlier that month, as my job requires me to be on top of current events. The first COVID case in the U.S. was announced by the CDC on January 21st, 2020. I have to say, I felt a bit uncomfortable being at the Bushnell with over 1,000 people for a buffet-style dinner with attendees closely packed together in the theater, while later on, dancing and singing during the after-performance activities. I'm not so sure if my wife and I left a bit earlier that night compared to previous years because of our thoughts in the back of our head about the virus, or that my wife found out a week earlier she was pregnant with our third beautiful child, or because we had two other beautiful children at home sleeping peacefully in their rooms while their grandparents held down the homestead. As I usually say, when there are multiple alternatives, it's probably some combination of all the above. But I have to say, I was a bit taken aback by the lack of awareness of COVID-19 at an event filled with medical experts. But perhaps I was not sitting in the right seat during that event to really know if my assessment was accurate. During the following weeks, I stopped shaking hands before and after the multitude of meetings I had with the smartest hedge fund managers and asset management talent in the world. In early February, I canceled my normally scheduled trips to New York City. In mid-March, when my boss said we could work from home, I didn't hesitate. I gathered my essentials and booked it out there as soon as I could. I alerted many of my family members that the virus had a high probability of spreading like wildfire in the U.S., like it was in China and Italy. When I made trips to the grocery store, I tried to stock up as much as feasibly possible so I wouldn't have to make frequent visits. I wore my mask everywhere, except alone in my vehicle, and I advised my family, especially my parents, to do the same. Then I did what I've been doing throughout my whole career. I meticulously dug into the facts and data as they came across, as they came out across various sources. When the preschool my children attended decided to close in March, I understood the owner's decision, and I said we looked forward to hopefully coming back in September, once we learned more about the virus. My wife and I did the best we could to take care of a two-year-old and four-year-old while we both worked full-time from home, with my wife progressing with her pregnancy. And we had it easy compared to a lot of other parents. We weren't essential workers, healthcare workers that had to be in person, so we had it easy. I thank all those people that had to be on the front lines during those times and today. As I gathered more facts and data regarding cases, deaths, and mitigation strategies, my wife and I reassessed the situation and re-enrolled our children into a childcare program. We willfully complied with mask protocols, as we were still in the camp of erring on the side of caution and gathering more facts and data. At the time, my daughter was too young for the mask mandates to apply. She no longer is too young for that. And my son, in kindergarten, being the kid he is then and now, had no issues wearing a mask. To this day, they both have zero issues wearing their masks. They've never complained once. But that's them. That's not everyone. And compliance does not equal science. I went back to gathering facts and data. President Trump at the time, and to this day, was really pushing vaccinations. I studied some of the history of vaccines and the average time for a vaccine to come to mass market. However, we know history doesn't repeat, but rather it rhymes. And in this day and age, with technological evolution and innovation, I found it reasonable to assume the normal timeline could be reduced from many years to perhaps a few years for a vaccine, not a few quarters. As the vaccine rollout began, I had more data points to form my opinions. As I studied the varying approaches to the pandemic across the world in regards to masks, vaccines, preventive treatments, lockdowns, I had yet more to work with. Sweden, Israel, India, Australia, the UK, New Zealand, podcasts, scientific articles, observational studies, randomized controlled trials, science pre-pandemic, science post-pandemic. I share that story because our views depend upon where we sit. I'm not here because I'm trying to move anyone's seat against their will. I'm not here to take away anyone's seat. I'm here in hopes of saying, you can have my seat for as long as you like, and I'd love to have a chance to sit in yours. I don't believe anyone here is to harm our children intentionally or unintentionally, nor do I believe anyone is ignorant or has not considered the potential impact of their decisions. Our current views and perceptions are influenced by our past and present experiences and future aspirations. What distinguishes us from other forms of life is our ability to work together in large groups and to use our imagination. Most times, the imagination of one person will be radically different than the imagination of another, but that doesn't mean that we cannot coexist. In fact, it means we can cooperate to achieve better outcomes than we could alone. It means we aren't just here to survive independently, but we are here to thrive together. Basketball season is starting soon, and there's a saying in basketball.
Jason, I've got to ask you to...
Just 60 more seconds, 30 more seconds. There's a saying in basketball, "The ball never lies." This is when the ref calls a foul that could go either way. It's one of those calls that's tough to make. People say if the foul shooter misses the free throw, then the ref made a bad call. If they make it, the ref made a good call. The ball never lies. There are many disputed fouls in our lives today, but after these games are over, I hope we can all look at the other team and acknowledge that it's not always the game that matters, but rather the love of the game that we share and the love for each other and for life. And if the refs made a lot of bad calls, they should be forgiven. We will always have the historical video archives of the game footage, and then we can determine if the refs made an honest mistake, if the refs perhaps had a misalignment of incentives versus the players, the coaches, and the fans, who all just want a level playing field, or if the refs just needed a different view of the court. As I always say, it's probably a combination of the above. The best players can overcome adversity, the highest levels of adversity, regardless of the refs, they just need to find the courage to press on. Last thing, that night on January 25th, 2020, I posted this. I became a true fan of Andy Grammer, so let me leave you with some lyrics from him. "I got my hands in my pockets, kicking these rocks. It's kind of hard to watch this life go by. I'm buying into skeptics. Skeptics mess with the confidence in my eyes. I'm seeing all the angles, thoughts get tangled. I start to compromise my life and my purpose. Is it all worth it? Am I going to turn out fine? Oh, you know, I'll turn out fine. Everything's going to be just..." Everything's going to be just fine." Thank you.
And our last speaker this evening is Quinn Pack.
I want to make sure you can hear me. Good evening. My name is Quinn Pack. I've lived in Ellington for four years. I'm the father of five children, including one in high school, one in middle school, and two at center school. I would actually first like to express my deep appreciation for the school board in keeping schools open with in-person learning last year. Although it felt scary at times, I was deeply impressed at how our school district managed the COVID pandemic last year. My children learned so much more this way, and to my knowledge, we did not have a single case of school-based spread of coronavirus. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am also a physician scientist. I work as a cardiologist at Bay State Medical Center in Springfield, Massachusetts. I have personally seen the ravages of coronavirus, including the significant and debilitating effects of long COVID, a condition that impacts up to 30% of patients for months after their diagnosis, even among those with initially mild disease. More importantly, a substantial amount of my professional work is in performing NIH-funded clinical research. I have a master's in clinical investigation from Mayo Clinic and have published more than 60 peer-reviewed scientific articles. In short, I live and breathe the scientific method every day. I look for important questions that need answering, and then I design the best study possible that will answer that question. In reviewing the data, the evidence for vaccination is now really uncontroversial. Literally hundreds of thousands of patients have been studied in multiple, well-controlled, prospective, randomized placebo-controlled trials. If anyone in this room has not been vaccinated, I urge you to take this critical step to protect yourself, your family, and your community. In my mind, saying that vaccination doesn't protect against coronavirus is akin to saying that the sun doesn't shine on a clear summer day. As I listened to the last Board of Education meeting, I was struck with an unexpected insight, however. For some families, there are some non-trivial downsides or side effects to universal masking. Moreover, in a literature search, I found that there was, that the evidence for universal masking was weaker than I had initially thought. I then realized that what we really needed was a large, community-based, prospective, randomized control trial of universal masking on disease transmission. Only a study like this could really study the debate in a convincing way. Shortly after the Board of Education meeting last month, such a study was published. This study was led by researchers at Yale, Stanford, Berkeley, and was performed among 600 villages and 324,000 adults. After providing a mask-promoting intervention, the investigative team made more than 800,000 observations and 20,000 serologic tests for coronavirus. After eight weeks, they conclusively demonstrated that mask-wearing reduced community transmission of coronavirus. I have a copy here for you to review. Scientific data doesn't get better than this. While this study is still in pre-print and needs to be peer-reviewed, its findings need to be reckoned with. Combined with other observational studies, it creates a formidable barrier to any who advocate that masks don't work. We are not free to ignore such data. This would be akin to believing that safety belts don't save lives, or that penicillin doesn't affect or impact strep throat. Recognizing that there are some downsides to universal masking, my advice to the Board would be twofold. First, wait to lift any mask mandates until younger children can be fully immunized. Based on recent developments, vaccination for children ages 5 to 11 will begin possibly in November, which is not that far away. Then, those who choose not to vaccinate their children can deal with the consequences themselves without jeopardizing the health of my children, who cannot yet be vaccinated. My second piece of advice is to establish a rate of community transmission or test positivity, below which masks become optional. It would work very simply. Above a threshold, universal masking. Below a threshold, masks become optional. You could debate what that threshold is, but such a policy could actually bring together both the pro and the anti-mask groups to help them work towards a common goal in eliminating disease transmission. I don't know what that threshold should be. I certainly believe it should not be any lower than our current 4% test positivity rate. My daughter was just quarantined today. I'm getting emails from Brian Greenleaf almost every single day. There are literally dozens of students who are testing positive and going home for quarantine. In summary, the science is now clear. Universal masking works in reducing community transmission. Our local experience corroborates this. Regardless of what Governor Lamont does, I urge you to please continue universal masking until at least my younger children can be vaccinated. Thank you.
That concludes our Citizens of Staff Forum. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Reviewing the consent agenda, are there any items any board member wishes to remove? Hearing none, the consent agenda stands. Reports and discussion items. Special report, staffing update by Ms. Taylor Rose.
Ms. Jen, if I may make a remark?
Certainly.
Thank you so much. One, I wanted to thank the Board for the approval of the Human Resource Coordinator. We're starting to get our legs underneath us a little bit in establishing the position that's been much needed. As you can see, we have a staffing report that is much more detailed than we've had in the past, and we hope to continuously improve upon that as we move forward. And the other thing I want to mention, just to embarrass Taylor a little bit, she just came back from her honeymoon and was just recently married, so if we can give her a round of applause.
Congratulations.
So, congratulations, Taylor. And so she's going to have a brief report here, and certainly if there's questions about it, that would be appropriate.
So Jen and I wanted to give you all a high-level update in regards to how the staffing has gone for the 2021 and 2022 school year. We did send out communication on September 17th. I believe the last time that I spoke with you all, I had said when I first started, I had done a small amount of onboarding and recruiting, and that has significantly changed since we last spoke. So since July 1st, we have hired 53 new employees and have others currently in the process right now. We have hired 26 certified new teachers and 25 non-certified staff. This is inclusive of recess aides, kindergarten aides, and food services, et cetera. Currently, we have four certified staff openings, in which one we should be closing by the end of the week. As far as our non-certified staff, we have about 27 openings right now. We do realize this is a large number of openings to have with the school year already started, so we have had to get a little creative with our recruiting. I'm sure you've seen, I sent out an email to the community, I think it was about three weeks ago, to see if they were interested in any of our opportunities, as well as if they knew anyone that was interested. I would deem that a little bit successful, because we were able to hire two to three aides off that email, so we will continue to do that. One of the other things I will be doing this week is reaching out to technical high schools to see if they can help us with any of our non-certified positions as well. So again, just wanted to give you all a high-level overview of that, and then leave it open to any questions that you guys may have for Jen and myself. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I do have a question. You said we hired 53 certified staff?
Fifty-three staff total, so that's certified and non-certified.
Okay. Are you offering any orientation to these new teachers?
Yes. So we did have new hire orientation for the teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is the health update on school year 2122. Mr. Greenleaf.
How's everybody doing tonight? All right. So we have started off the school year pretty successfully. You know, we have had a handful of cases that have come up and that have been communicated out to the full community. Again, as we talked about the last time, one of our tenants, as we go through, is open, transparent communication. So we do continue to send out those emails when cases do come up through our schools. What we have seen in this year as compared to last year is very much a very similar trend, where our layers of mitigation within schools are seemingly to prevent transmission within the schools. A lot of the cases that we see do come from outside, when we do that contact tracing and try to understand where those cases are coming from. And we're not seeing necessarily follow-on cases in those students that we've deemed or staff that we've deemed in close contact to those cases. So that, again, proves, as we kind of talked about last year, that that layer of mitigation, so those multiple litigation strategies that we employ, are still working within the schools. A couple other things, just from a health standpoint, as the Board's aware from some recent communication. We are going through the Governor's 13G mandate, working with our staff to set that up. As we've talked about, we're doing it in a very labor-friendly way. We've now set our first testing date for those who are required to do that on Friday. It is the saliva direct test, so it's an oral test as opposed to nasal, still FDA-approved, but maybe more pleasant for the, you know, person taking the test. They may prefer that over the nasal swab. But again, it still meets all the requirements of the DPH order to test compliance-wise. So that'll start on Friday within the school buildings and then follow up every Thursday after that. In terms of masks, we are anticipating an update from the Governor's office probably next week, and I know, I think Scott wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Brian. First, what I wanted to just quickly comment, I continue to be impressed with our community, although everyone here in the audience right now, those at home that are watching, our Board of Education. The path forward, when things are challenging, when things are emotional, when things are distressing, is to keep the lines of communication open, is to be treating each other with as much respect as we can. Certainly, one of our tenants of the seeds of civility is allowing for emotional reactions. When parents, and I am a parent of actually a child in this school district, but also a parent in Portland, parents can be frightened for a variety of different reasons. And the fact that we can have meetings like this, and we can communicate in a respectful manner, and people continue to learn from one another, super, super important. I know that the, we all anticipate the legislature coming together in some sort of session possibly next week. And I know from having various communications with various individual board members over time, that there's an interest in seeing what the, if the Governor's powers are extended, executive powers are extended, and for how long before a more in-depth dialogue and/or board action could be taken on this. And I think that's a reasonable approach, considering that the timing of this is next week, more than likely. And so what the Board of Education is certainly, at their pleasure, is always allowed to do, is whatever the outcome of that legislative session is, and the extension or not of the Governor's powers regarding masks or anything else, the Board of Education can always call a special meeting within 24 hours if they wish, and have a single agenda item, and to address that if they deem it necessary. Or it can be something that is addressed at another regular education board meeting. So, you know, that is something that I think, at this juncture right now, that would be a wise thing to consider for the Board. So with that being said, I wanted to turn it back over to Brian Greenleaf. That's what I had in terms of maskings at this point in time.
Any questions?
Brian, how many children do we have quarantined at this point?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, and there was another case today that they're currently working on. So what I can say is, the new contact tracing guidelines and the flexibilities that those do provide, if students are within, outside of three feet from each other and masked, have been reducing the number of students that we've had to quarantine in each of the cases.
And how are they being educated if they're in quarantine?
Sorry, indicated or educated?
Educated.
Educated, yes. So, you know, for any student who ends up in quarantine, and it does vary by level, but the gist of it is that they can access synchronous learning within their classroom, more so at the high school level. Obviously, it dials back a little bit as you go down towards the younger grades, but they can access synchronous learning throughout the day. There's also asynchronous postings that the teachers do into the Google Classroom.
Not the full day, though, right? Just parts of the day?
Again, it depends on the level, right? So a high school student's going to have more time to go through their schedule-
Yeah, we heard more about that.
... and access our classrooms. An elementary student would be a couple points throughout the day, not the whole day.
Right. And if I can add to that, what, the process that we use was our Assistant Superintendent, Oliver Barton, worked with the administrative team to come up with some draft guidelines, then worked with teachers and the principals at all the levels for them to provide input on that. It was also, you know, presented to the curriculum committee for their feedback and understanding. The difference between this year and last year is, obviously, we had guidelines and standards for Silver Group or remote learning that was considered to be for an extended period of time. This particular situation is to keep the child continuously learning while in quarantine for a limited amount of time. And so, yes, synchronous learning at the high school is much easier, but there is synchronous learning at the elementary school, with some asynchronous learning with guidelines for continuous teacher-to-student contact and teacher-to-parent contact, to make sure the child, when they're out for, say, that 10 days, that when they return, they are still in a position to continue with learning the curriculum.
Brian, of the cases that we've had so far this year, the students that you've quarantined, have any of them been positive after quarantine that you know of?
That I know of, no. And again, it goes back to, you know, as we talked through last year, those layers of mitigation do seem to hold. You know, we do still have, one of the layers of mitigation is to ensure that there is no follow-on cases that then are exposed to others, which is why we do that contact tracing and quarantine process. I know that's difficult for parents when, you know, their kid has to go home. I've had that experience in my own life, but, you know, ultimately, what that does is help keep everybody safe.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Brian. The next item on our agenda is the Regular Board Committee, and we will start with Curriculum. Dr. Young.
Give me a second to get the old computer fired up here. Curriculum had a meeting on the 23rd? Twenty-four? No. Fourteen. Fourteen, thank you. And we had two items on the agenda. The first was about math. Dr. Depauw, is he here? Oliver, okay. Dr. Depauw, who's in charge of our math interventions, has focused this year around four, what he calls, pillars of math performance, the first of which is to be data-driven about our decisions about math. And we have several efforts going on, including Infinite Campus, to create dashboards of data, and we're using edge elastic tools to make S-Back-like exams through school. There is also a community pillar and a data visualization pillar. So you can read more about that in our minutes, but the focus, we had a good debate with the curriculum committee about whether or not we're teaching to the test if we go too far on the S-Back, and if it indeed is focused directly on the curriculum that's relevant to kids, making it more hands-on and learner-centric. So we're looking forward to staying on top of that and watching for success. As we know, we do have some issues, particularly in the middle grades, with math. Would you like to add to that particular item?
Sure. Just very briefly, the work within the math department with math specialists and teachers is around following where student strengths are across different classrooms and grade levels in schools in the district, and figuring out how to leverage the instructional strategies that are successful in some classrooms and some parts of the district to make sure that those are spread as thoroughly as a- to make sure that those are spread as thoroughly as possible across all classrooms. So they're looking at the progression of skills as noted in the assessments, both classroom-based assessments and the standardized assessments. So that's just a little more on the data piece that Dr. Young was referring to.
Well, and we disaggregated and noticed that not all schools were having similar problems, which is why we want to focus like that, correct?
Yes, there are different strengths and different areas for growth across different schools.
All right, and the second item on our agenda was a, an effort to organize the high school advisory structures and to make those around four types of advisory. The first being business advisory, the second academic roundtable, then something that's currently being called the night shift with, you know, K-N-I-T, N-I-G-H-T. And then portfolio, or their e-portfolio development work. And I guess the only one of those that you would want to talk further about is this night shift, which is designed to give the opportunity to students to have a voice around critical issues and to organize that in a structure that would be monthly. So as things come up, we can easily say, okay, we're going to deal with that during advisory on that occasion and just try to get a handle on some of those open civil discourse issues that relate to heritage and current events and put some structure around that in terms of what advisors do and put both our world language and our social studies teachers out in front of that to scaffold the advisors. So we're looking forward to that getting implemented on a rolling basis, correct? Mr. Barton, anything to add there?
Sure, so just to elaborate very briefly, those heritage months or celebrations and curriculum pieces that are based in advisory are connected to the standards in social studies and world language. So they're an existing part of the curriculum. They're just experienced through a different format that provides the students across the school to be involved in certain topics through a monthly cadence throughout the year.
Yeah, and I don't know if you guys have been teachers, but Advisory Day was always my dreaded time. Never knew what was going to happen in advisory and, or what my role was. And I do appreciate the structure being placed around that because I think it'll add to the instructional time and the value of those times.
And if I could add, something that was very important for the high school administration was to ensure that with enough notice, parents were aware of what the general advisory activities were going to be and what the focus was going to be. And so there's going to be a concerted effort to, A, have a video that kind of explains what the advisory committee structure is, so parents are very clear on that. And then, B, to the extent possible, the lesson plan or some of the resources that would be used to be provided on the website so that parents could take a look at them in advance so they clearly understand what the focus is, so there's not many, any misunderstandings. And I think that's in the spirit of what we're doing with curriculum at the high school in grounding it in, as was mentioned, those history, those social studies standards that are about appreciating and valuing.
And world languages.
And world languages, appreciating and valuing all cultures, all of them, including the gamut from Europe to Asia to Africa to the United States, everything in between. And we know that's a very complex endeavor, but we feel it's important for people to engage in those conversations.
Thank you, and I'd just note that we have a high school regional accreditation coming up in NEASC. And always, school culture and climate is part of that, and I think this is also getting in front of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Next committee report is operations, Ms. Sotcha.
Yeah, operations met September 16th. There was one agenda item. As many of you may or may not know, the, I believe Brian had discussed it earlier in his report, that the state is funding, is providing funding to the town of over $4 million to use in response to the pandemic. And the funding to the town is to be used in a very defined way. So we met to discuss what our priorities as a Board of Education would be for our request to the town. And I'm really pleased that we were all on the same page in that meeting and that our number-one priority was testing. And the testing comes as a, is a response to meeting the government mandate. So our staff, some of our staff will be required by the government to be tested on a weekly basis and how would we manage that. And we did, so that was our number-one priority on our list. We also, the other priorities on the list had to do with air conditioning and ventilation at Ellington High School cafeteria, gymnasium, Center School cafeteria, Ellington Middle School cafeteria, and Ellington Middle School gymnasium in that, in that order. We had the projected cost estimates of each of those projects, but we had decided that when we go to the town, we would be, the first priority on our list would be the screen testing. And this is super important because if we have a staffing shortage, then we can't keep these schools open. So we really need to support all of the staff that work here regardless of what decisions, medical decisions they make and to support the children to keep these schools going. So we, our number-one ask is going to be for $90,000 to help offset the cost of the testing, which is appropriate under the guidelines set forth by the state of this. But we don't, we are going to go to the town with this request. So we're not guaranteed to get that, but that's what we chose in our operations meeting to ask for first and then followed by the air conditioning at the schools, which would benefit not only the staff and kids at these schools, but the high school is, if there was an emergency, we could use, the high school facility would have air conditioning to help other residents if there was a need for people to go there as an emergency situation. So, um, so that will be what we'll be submitting to the town. And the first, the first thing was the screening. I know the cost has changed as of yesterday.
Care, do you want to kind of explain some of the changes?
If you want to, yeah. I know it was, it was 105 and we now.
Yeah, so a couple things, right? So, and I'm going to have Greg talk about the ACs in a second here. So on the screening testing, as the board is aware through the email today, we are doing that screening testing program, partnering with Priority Urgent Care to launch that, as I said, Friday. And then every Thursday thereafter, we're going to do that for a month, utilizing some grant funding that we have available to us. That reduces the cost because, as we talked about in the operations meeting yesterday, there is a, you know, we're planning for the whole year, right? And so obviously, if we're going to take away a month and do that on our own dime, that'll reduce our ask to the town. So that's the difference between the $105,000 and the $90,000 that the board saw yesterday. The other thing that.
Brian, the $15,000 is because we're going to ask people to, that have to get tested, to pay?
$15,000 is our portion of that, right? So we introduced a sliding scale of co-pays to go along with that from $5 to $20 based on bargaining group, really based on income.
Right, but you say it's from us, but it's really because we're going to ask employees?
The $15,000 is our end of the cost. It is what we are going to pay to subsidize that testing for those employees.
So in it, we're not asking them to do the sliding scale cost now?
We're doing both.
Okay.
They're not going to pay the total cost. They're going to pay what I think is a very reasonable co-pay between $5 and $20 based on income level. And the board will pick up between $25 and $40 for the test.
Brian, what if we have an employee who has hardship and can't pay that?
I think we can, we'll assess that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Brian, are you concerned with that some of the employees would be considered hourly employees versus salaried employees? And when you're making them pay the sliding scale and/or the time they're using to get the test? Are we worried about that?
Yeah, so, you know, again, as was kind of explained in the email, this is a program that we're bringing onsite, so it really is a convenience factor for them. They don't have to get in their car and go anywhere to a testing clinic. They don't have to go and pay, certainly if they go to like a CVS or a Walgreens, they're probably going to get charged for a screening test. There are free sites that we've still pointed people to if they really would like to go to one of those. But we think that the program that we're going to run has, you know, big three benefits, or the convenience factor, right? It being right at their workplace, the type of test that I just talked about before, and the documentation piece. They don't have to worry about the documentation as long as they consent for Priority Urgent Care to send the test results to us. We'll get those automatically and they won't even have to worry about it. So those kind of three things, that convenience factor, is where we're talking about that co-pay piece of it. Again, knowing that there's also free testing that they can access if that's a big concern for them. The other thing is, on the sliding scale, again, it is based on what the district is paying the person to some extent, right? So our part-time workers are at the $5 range or our, you know, higher-paid salaried staff are at the $20 range.
So if the, if an hourly employee opts to, after work or before, are they going to be allowed to go get the free test during working hours? Or is this going to be after or before working hours?
So we haven't fully discussed that yet, but I believe that because we're offering the test to them during school day, that we wouldn't provide additional release time to go somewhere else.
Okay, so are we, if an employee, because they're given the option to go get the free test, if they're an hour, specifically referring to hourly employees, if they're going to get the free test somewhere else because they don't want to pay the sliding scale, are we opening ourselves to any kind of liability in regards to, we're mandating that they get the test, not on work time, we're not paying them for the time to go get the test? So does that expose us in any way to any kind of liability?
I don't believe so. You know, the way that the test, the way that the guidance has stated is, you know, it's really the employees' decision as to how they want to get the test. And districts do not have to provide release time, do not have to provide any subsidization of costs for them. A lot of districts have chosen that route. We've chosen a different route, which is to be more labor-friendly, to bring a testing site to them. If they do not want to avail themselves of that, and again, I understand that there's some cost to that convenience factor, then they can go do that. And I do also know, just from having looked today at where those free testing sites are, none of them are really close to us. The closest one, I believe, is going to be in Vernon, and that's going to be on Sunday mornings. So there's not this wide, super-wide availability of those free test sites at convenient hours.
I understand. My concern is that if you're an hourly employee and you choose to go get the free test somewhere else because we're charging for it at our, at our school, are we opening ourselves to liability that we're mandating them to do something for work but not paying them for the time to go and do it? That's, that's just a, that's just a question, a concern.
If I could.
Does having this, this option of paying here enough to protect us from, you know, the employment laws?
And Ms. Sotcha, I think it's a very valid legal question that you're raising. And I do believe that there will be a lot of legal challenges, you know, in the coming months and years on many of the different actions that local districts have taken and the state has taken and the federal government has taken. And so, you know, we don't have an answer for you right now in terms of that. But I think that's a legal question that eventually is going to be answered in some form or fashion. And so it's, it's a very valid point. And when we work with our attorneys and when we try to implement these things, we have to be fully aware of these and could be considering them and making the best decisions we can at the time. But I would encourage you, because I know that's your field, to continue to raise these legal questions so we can, we can get them on the record and we can be fully aware of some of the complications we may have in the future.
Well, I think beyond that, we should be speaking with our attorney and getting some information as to where we stand as far as liability with that. I think that's an important point, so I think we need to follow up with that.
And I do understand that a lot of the attorneys, as we sit here right now, have no, do not know, cannot predict the future, but are predicting lots of litigation regarding it. I'm just saying that we weigh our risks, which is if we, if we can, if we say, okay, here, you have to pay the $5, right? Does that, by doing that, or whatever the sliding scale is for hourly employees more specifically, are we opening up or taking a risk that could potentially cost us? Because once a lawsuit is filed, we know how expensive those are. So do, is that, and it may be a risk we want to take, but just knowing that we're making the decision to take that risk based, based on what we're doing. That's, that's the only question. These are questions I'm trying to bring forward so that we know that there's no surprises down the road, like, why didn't we think of this? Why didn't we know this? Okay, fine, we're willing to take the risk. We don't know how the judicial is going to, is going to pan out in a year or two from now.
Point, yeah, point taken, definitely.
I think to both your points, we can certainly ask our attorney for that advice and get back to you. Just a couple other things to note in the way that it's presented here today. Greg's been doing a great job tracking down vendors, trying to get quotes in short order here. There's kind of two columns highlighted in gray. Those represent kind of a low-end, high-end cost. And it's really about the project conceptualization of how they would go about doing that. The low-end total is really more within the current systems renovating them. The high-end total would be really more replacing those systems with newer models. If you have any questions, Greg is also here to.
One second before you go on to that. Back to the screening and the testing, it's my understanding that the guidance came out one week ago and now you're mandated by Friday to have testing.
The guidance came out on Friday and they revised the guidance today.
So I appreciate all the extra time.
Yes.
Put forth to provide this for the staff that is here. I know it's been lots of hours, after hours, so thank you.
So any questions on the kind of project conceptualizations? Greg can certainly speak to those.
So Greg, for the AC in the gym at the middle school, we still, we have the low, but we don't have a high point or?
Yes, so.
The electrical?
Correct, and good evening, board.
Sorry, yes, good evening, I dove right in. Sorry about that, Greg.
No, all good. So, yeah, the, the low-end total at the middle school caf, gymnasium is to add cooling into the current system.
Okay.
On the high side, to, to change that equipment would mean to put new equipment up on the roof. And we're still working through that because we have solar panels up there and the weight of the equipment.
Well, that's right. You did mention at the last meeting that it was too, the equipment was too heavy to put on the roof. So we're looking at alternatives on the side of the building.
Correct.
Correct, okay, okay.
Well, we're looking at alternatives on the side of the building. We're also looking at bringing it back to find sort of a happy medium ground in between adding new equipment and, and adding on to our current existing equipment. And for that, we're working with the building department. And we're trying to figure out where we can, where we can find that happy medium.
Okay, so will we have these numbers before Friday?
I don't know specifically for the AC in the middle school. I don't know specifically for the AC in the middle school gymnasium. The issue there is that the number that they gave us was very cost prohibitive, and so we didn't want to put it on the paper because it was
Okay.
very cost prohibitive. So, we're still working to find that, as Greg said, happy medium.
Is there a possibility of us taking that off of the?
I know, we could potentially, we could also leave it on there as the low end, and if that doesn't come to fruition, you know, again, I don't know that they're going to need a specific number right away.
Okay.
So, you know, what I would say is, if we have more time to get that to them, you know, even if it means putting, leaving the TBD
Okay.
on there, let's do that, and then we can go to them and say, here's what we've been working on, here's why it was originally a TBD, and here's what we've been doing to get an actual cost associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Board members?
I'm, I'm wondering if this is approved, how, when you would start sending it out to bid, when would it be ready to be sent out to bid? Any of the air conditioning systems?
Yeah, so typically, when we do work of this size, and again, I think it might depend on the scope of the project that we end up doing, whether it's the renovation or the replacement, we typically try to do those over the summer because that's when we don't necessarily use the buildings consistently, and so the work can be done without any interruption to the ventilation that's ongoing in the building. So, you know, it is also a townside project, so we don't necessarily, we have to follow the townside rules, and we're going to have to follow the rules that are associated with the rescue plan, state and local recovery guidance from, from the feds and state, to make sure that the bidding procedures are all done properly. But my guess would be, that would be done in the spring and then the summer for the actual work.
So, is there a date that this would have to be done by, as far as the grant is concerned?
As far as the grant is concerned, I believe it runs through at least 2024. So, you know, I think our goal would be to try and have something ready for the summer of 2022, and I believe that's in accordance with where the townside decision-makers are thinking about this.
Thank you.
I think I have a quick one.
Certainly.
You're talking about the difference between the low end and the high end, and maybe trying to find that happy medium, and I'm wondering what, what your thoughts are on what guides that? Because I presume part of the justification for this being part of the rescue plan is that it's a safety, that it also upgrades our ventilation system and the amount of air we float through the building. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, where, what, what would be your kind of guiding principle here with regard to finding right sizing it?
So, between the low end and the high end, the deciding factor is really the building codes, and where the building inspector is gonna, you know, the, the high-end vendor is saying, no, adding the cooling is, is gonna violate some building codes that, you know, weren't around before. So now we want to meet with the building inspector and say, okay, what can we do and what can't we do, so we can decide where?
Okay, so the principle would be, get as much air flowing through there as possible for safety's sake. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Miriam, go ahead.
Jen, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, I think the ordinance said that all projects over a hundred thousand dollars had to go to a town meeting. So, I, I'm wondering if, if that means individual projects or the whole thing, and if you have any insight into that?
I don't at this time, but we certainly can look into that. I would, I would assume that they would group them and, and go to the town grouped, but we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions?
Just, just a comment. I do want to thank the administration for working really hard in, and trying to prevent a staffing shortage and having our schools closed down, and I know that these government mandates have been really hard on you guys with your time and your extra time, too. So I really do appreciate all the work that you're doing to keep these schools open.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Fine, I'm sorry, anything else from operations? Okay, Finance Committee, Liz.
Okay, we met on September eighth, and we had four things, four items. We discussed, the last item was the American Rescue Plan, so this is some more information in addition to what Carrie said in operations. The town will receive four-point-eight million dollars, and that's the pot that we're asking for approximately twenty percent of, or fifteen, twenty percent of. And ventilation and testing are some of the items that they do list as what can, the money can be used for, so that's why we chose that. And these are capital improvements and, which would be something that the town would have for a very long time. One other thing we did do is we did recognize the work that Anita Yost did with the town, and working with Tiffany and Felicia at the town finance to get the new Infinite Visions software up and running. And we did that, we just recognized that during finance because it had to do with finances and stuff. So, we also discussed the bases program. I had asked Brian to give us some financial information on that program, and he broke down the cost of the program. We do have three teachers there, one's a counselor, one's a seven through twelve, and correct me if I'm wrong, and one's a K-six. We are lucky to have a building or an area that we can work with kids in these programs at the low rent that we are paying, because I was concerned about the cost of the rent and utilities, and it'll be about fifty thousand for the year. The program itself will house, when it's fully up and running, about twenty students. I, I think this, this is a good investment for, for us as a Board of Education to help students with what they need before they can function well in a regular classroom. The other thing we discussed was the final expenditures. We will be giving money back to the town, and we are hoping that they will put some of that money into the medical reserve account so that we can continue to build that reserve up for our self-funded health insurance. So, at this point, we did make a motion, and it was approved, to give back to the town four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, and asking them to appropriate three-hundred thousand to the medical reserve account. And the other item we discussed was the budget update. Will Brian will do much better than I do anyway, so I'll leave it up to him.
Yeah, just one thing to note on the four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, because it sounds like a lot of money, so I want to make sure everybody's clear on it. We had a lot of one-time savings due to COVID across multiple lines, including salaries, benefits, transportation, tuition, that more than exceeded our one-time costs associated with purchases of PP&amp;E and other mitigation strategies that we put throughout the building. So, you know, that four-hundred-and-ninety-two does look like a lot, but last year was a very atypical year, and we had a lot of one-time savings, so I do want to be clear there. The three-hundred thousand dollars represents kind of two big chunks that I also want to make sure is clear. One is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which we spent down in our dental reserve fund, which means we basically credited our expenditures so that we are showing lighter expenditures. That's because that reserve was too high, and so the only way to get it over into the medical reserve account is to spend it down and then ask the town to appropriate it that way. The other thing I just want to quickly mention is, so that's on, on that, and I can certainly ask, answer any questions. I do also just want to thank Liz for thanking Anita. Her retirement is on the agenda today, so she's my right hand in the business office. I couldn't do my job without her. She's a wonderful asset to the organization. We're going to miss her, and I think we will recognize her at a later point in time. I also just want to recognize Greg, who did an amazing job getting that basis program ready over on West Road, along with the help of Christie and Melissa in setting that up. It came out really amazing. It was pretty much turnkey, but we did a lot of work to it anyway, and Greg was leading that all the way, so I do want to thank him as well on that.
And, and I urge the Board members to go over and take a look at it if you haven't seen it already.
Thank you. Any, any que, Liz, is, that's it? You're all set? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I'll be back.
There was no policy or communications?
Can I just say, though, policy tonight, we still do have as action items, seven policies, the revised policies that I talked about last month, but they are up as action items for a second read tonight. So, those are there. And our next meeting is October twelfth at five-thirty.
And that will be Chris's last, so...
That will be my last one.
I expect everyone to attend.
No.
Her last policy.
Are you baking a cake?
Yes, so I expect everyone to be there. Thank you. Yes, she's going to bake her own cake. No, no, I'm kidding, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Jen, I do have communications.
Yes, please, go ahead, Jen.
I'm sorry, I would do.
That's okay, no, I should have known.
We did film another episode of Behind the Scenes Monday, and Maddie, our student representative, was our first student spotlight, and I'm looking forward to that coming out either the end of this week or the beginning of next. And we were also able to get with Dario Soto and learn a little bit about what's going on at Crystal Lake and how he is acclimating to the environment up there and how great and wonderful things are going up there. Our next episode is going to be, Liz, to your point, we're hoping to get over to the bases building and film over there and let everyone know how wonderful it is in person. Well, through the behind-the-scenes episode.
Virtual person.
Virtual person, yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for that report, Jen. Moving on to administrative reports, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Nickel.
Yes, thank you very much. I have one, one update that is attached to a possible motion for you to consider. You all have, you've received this already, this, this draft of a letter that possibly may go to our First Selectmen, copying in our Board Chair and also copying in our Board of Finance Chair, Michael Pocaro. The topic is regarding shared services. As the Madam Chair mentioned in her Board Chair Report, that the Shared Services Committee has been resurrected, and we, the administration looks forward to having that committee work in concert with the town, to be very productive and efficient for all involved. One of the things that we're looking forward to, at a minimum, when you do a shared service committee and you're, and you're meeting on a regular basis, you have the town and the Board of Education building relationships, sharing information, and we know that the more we do that in a consistent way, that everyone is more informed, and that is, that is just a positive. That consistent systemic way to build relationships, super-important. Not everything will be able to be a shared service, but there will be some opportunities. We're trying to get the ball rolling here. There was an opportunity, and we want to wish Joe Palmbizio good luck in his retirement. Interestingly enough, way back when, back when I was a little boy, we bought his house when he moved out in Vernon, so we both lived in the same home, so I'll miss, I'll miss Joe. But Joe's retirement opened up a possible, a possibility. I know the town was working on an emergency management public safety position, approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars. As time has gone on, the amount of emergency prep work and drills and mandates has increased exponentially in the school system. So, working with Brian Greenleaf, we have suggested to the town for them to consider making this a shared service position. I have an emotion here for the Board to consider contributing to this position, up to twenty thousand dollars, basically to authorize us to work with them in that regard. That can be a first, good step. I think the shared service position would serve both the town and the Board of Education well in terms of the level of service that a position of this nature with a salary around eighty-seven thousand dollars would do. So I am endorsing that as Superintendent, and looking forward to working with the town and the shared services. And so that is a motion that actually could be considered at this point in time because it's not on the action item list, and it is up for discussion and questions, and if the Board feels comfortable with that, that's something they could consider right at this point in time.
I would entertain a motion. Is anyone?
I would like to move that the Board, Director, the Superintendent of Schools, to collaborate with the appropriate town boards and personnel to explore and possibly execute a shared service position in the area of emergency management, and to authorize a financial contribution in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Directors' Reports, we have the 2021, 2022 District Improvement Plan. Mr. Barton, come on up.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here. I'm sorry that we had to wait so long for this important part of the agenda, but I will time myself to make sure we don't go past eight o'clock. So, the District Improvement Plan is organized as it has been historically in, it's, it's a, basically a balcony-level roadmap to guide the district in our work for the year, and that includes three parts: setting some focus areas, setting some targets, both in terms of student outcomes and community feedback, and then finally, some specific strategies on how we can achieve our goals for the year. So, want to remind you just a little bit on the process and timeline related to the District Improvement Plan, and first off, thank and recognize the Board for their contribution and involvement and insight during our combined admin and board retreat on August 24th, where we heard some really thoughtful reflection from Board members on the challenges that districts face and the opportunities we have moving forward, and then some interaction with district administrators around some specific focus areas. So, after that really important and interesting feedback and contributions from Board members, administrators reflected further and drafted, came up with some strategies for this particular school year. From that work, we have now in front of you a draft of the District Improvement Plan, and once that is approved, school-based leaders will refine and, and work on their school improvement plans, which also set the foundation for teacher-specific plans around the learning of the specific students in their own classrooms. So those are student learning objectives that they set as part of their process every year. So, in the, the three focus areas, as they've been, continue to be, social-emotional learning, high-quality teaching, and efficient operations. And I'll just briefly highlight one or two items from each of those areas. In social-emotional learning, huge focus this year is the continued implementation and development of the Ruler Program, which is a research-based systematic approach to social-emotional learning everywhere from pre-K through grade twelve and staff. So, the Ruler Program trains students and staff in five key skills. The letters R-U-L-E-R stand for recognizing emotions, understanding emotions, labeling emotions, expressing emotions, and regulating our emotions. So, that's, those are the components of the training. Teachers, core team from each school will be trained this year, then training will be rolled out to teachers, all staff before the end of the school year for a launch with students in the 2022, 23 school year, so the following school year. Additionally, in social-emotional learning, we're looking at the great feedback we received as part of our cultural feedback through some climate surveys across stakeholder, the stakeholder groups of students, families, and staff. So there are some highlights in this report from this year's climate data or survey data. from this year's climate data or survey data. And this year, we'll be reflecting on how impactful or how informative those indicators were in helping the district refine approaches to engagement of students and stakeholders in learning and participation in education. So we'll review those and refine the survey process this year. In terms of the high-quality teaching area, we know that there have been huge impacts of the disruption of learning during the pandemic. So we need to focus on intervention or supports for students who've developed some specific learning gaps across all the grade levels. So intervention, or SRBI, is a huge area of focus within high-quality teaching. And then other efforts to improve both supports for students and the rigor of curriculum and instruction. So those are some just general focus areas in teaching and learning. And finally, in efficient operations, the goal remains to have students in school and learning in as wholesome and healthy and engaging environment as possible, right? So all the supports and structures from operations that allow schools to continue to operate efficiently, so that operations really step back into the background and all staff can focus on the well-being and development and academic progress of students. So one example within that area is also the work on human resources. And we heard from Taylor Rose earlier around her onboarding and some strategies on recruitment and positive policies towards all staff. So those are just a few of the highlights from the strategies that are in the district improvement plan. And if there are any questions related to those strategies or the focuses of the year, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one question. The Ruler Program, we're going to train a core group of teachers. Will they then come back and be trainers for the teachers in district?
Yes.
That's it.
Jen, a question?
Please, go ahead. Sorry, Carrie.
So I wanted to talk about the SBACs. I know there's what you just stated by the state, and I saw the state's statement in there that regarding the in-person learning. I think there's perhaps a perception in our schools that the distance learners are behind academically. So my question is, how are we identifying our distance learners that are behind, and how are we serving these students? And I was hoping to see the SBACs grade by grade, where we would see the in-person learning SBAC scores and the distance learning SBAC scores, so we could get a better measure of that. Because I'm not sure that, well, it might be statistically that distance learners came back this year and are behind. I don't know that every single, that's the case for every single distance learner, and if we can identify the students that were impacted by distance learning, how are we doing that and supporting them?
Great. Great question. Thank you. So we did look at that data a little bit within the curriculum committee, and we can come back and continue to do that further now that the data has been released by the state. But thankfully, we found in that initial, the initial results, obviously, there were only about 10% of students who were distant learners across the grade levels. And by grade level, it actually varied, where in some cases, the distant learners did just as well in their progress and their overall scores as the students who were learning in person. So that varies by subject and grade level. And additionally, 75% of the students who were distance learners either maintained the same level in the SBAC or increased, or moved forward, or showed progress as strong as the in-person learners. So yes, there is a need for some learners, both in-person and distance learners from last year. And the classroom assessments that we're using right in the beginning of the school year are identifying where students may have some gaps. And teachers are looking at the results from SBAC in terms of the specific targets to see where there may be some gaps that they need to work on based on that data from last spring.
I just don't want there to be a stigma with that. I think the distance learners coming back into school, that was, you know, that was unsettling enough because they had been away for so long. But then they come in, and then to have comments made by staff that, oh, well, we expect that you would be behind. I really, I don't think that's really the way we should go. So when we're talking in generalities and maybe statewide, I just don't know if the same generalities apply to Ellington, and like you just said, with the numbers. And even still, are we breaking that down by students? So for example, if you had a distance learner student who typically, whatever the scoring system is, typically scored a 10 on that exam, are they still scoring a 10 when they came back after the distance learning? Or are they scoring below what they would normally score? So that we're not looking, we're looking at it on an individual basis, because some distance learners may have been ahead and then fell back, but are we catching those as well? As well as the students that maybe started off behind even when they were in person, did they fall further behind? Or did they go further even if they are still behind? We don't, those are the kind of questions I'm having about this distance learning thing that I'm interested to find out.
So those are great questions, and I want to correct if I implied in any way that there were larger or huge gaps by the distance learners. When I said that there were impacts from last school year, I meant impacts that affected both in-person learners and remote learners.
Yeah, I don't think it's anything you said, but I think that some of the staff out there have that automatic perception because of what, you know, the media, not necessarily what we do here, but because of how the media has, you know, labeled it, which may be very true, but may not be true for, I'm hoping is not true for Ellington. Because I think we did a great job, by the way, with our distance learning program.
Yeah. So in my experience in discussions with teachers about how students are doing across their classrooms, they're very excited to see all students back. And they are looking student by student at their academic progress and academic results to support them and challenge them moving forward. So I haven't heard or seen any cases of sort of a bias or a prejudice against any of the particular learning modes, or an assumption that those students are necessarily behind. And what we're doing in the process of having teachers set learning objectives within their classrooms is for them to look objectively at their roster of students, the data they have on how they did at the end of the school year and the beginning of this school year, and then set targets for growth based on that. So I really, I appreciate your concern in that direction, and we'll keep an eye out and an ear out as teachers reflect on that data, so that we can make sure that students are all feeling supported and welcomed and engaged in each of those classrooms.
Thank you.
Mr. Barton, would you just say a word about the fact that SBAC data that we are going to try to put into these Infinite Canvas dashboards, this particular year's worth of data is a little sketchy.
It's what?
It's a little sketchy.
Oh.
Right. So the state has released some broad patterns on that, but we obviously have information from within Ellington. Students were encouraged to come and test in person for SBAC, so that was very useful. But obviously, some couldn't, or were not able to, which meant they were taking a state assessment in a home setting, which we've never done before. And
Not monitored, as I recall.
Right, right. They weren't sort of watched, thankfully, from some other camera to see who else was in the room.
We in college did that a lot. We don't know about the ethics of it.
Right. So obviously, as adults or high school, junior high school kids, when we're faced with a challenge and we're stuck, right, what do we do? We're tempted to look up, look at some resources and support from elsewhere.
What was the percentage of kids that didn't come, that did not, chose not to come in to take the SBAC test? Because distance learners did come in to take it, didn't come into the buildings to take it.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a figure on that.
We'll text Brian Hendrickson right now.
There you go.
We did have that number. I have seen that number.
I'll get that for you.
They'll get that for you, Carrie.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make two comments on the improvement plan here. The first being under social emotional. I was named as the board representative to the wellness committee. I'll be on the board almost two years. We've met twice, and I know it's because of COVID. But I want to officially go on record as urging that this happen, it says fall, winter, winter and spring. And as the board representative, I'd urge you to do that as soon as we can. I think that that committee can make some very valuable contributions. And the second is under high-quality teaching. Number four, in the spring during budget time, the library media specialists were a hot topic. And I know that you came in after, you know, that was Brian's deal, but my understanding was we would get a report on how library media specialists and the technology and all of that were working, and we didn't get that. And so I would hate to wait until May 2022 to get a report on that. So I'm asking that if we can get at least something.
Could curriculum put that on and hear from Lynda Robinson?
Yes, absolutely. We can definitely do that at curriculum committee meeting.
Okay. I just, I just looked at the date and said, I myself don't want to wait until 2022, because as some of you know, that was a hot topic for me.
Good point.
That is, good point, Mary.
We'll make sure that that happens at the next curriculum committee meeting, and so that we can report out on that, and then the follow-up would come to the whole board.
Also, the irony that wellness didn't get covered because of COVID is
Right.
It's not lost, I mean.
Right. Any other questions from board members? I have a couple for you, Oliver.
Great.
When we're looking at the qualitative measures under social emotional learning, the target to get to 80% for students at my school treat each other with respect, this is, this is important. We're at 64%, you know, with a high of 75, and we're hoping to get to 80. Would part of that be based on the Ruler Program?
Right. So that'll vary by grade level, but certainly, the Ruler Program, the value is that that is across all grades. So students understanding emotions and regulating their emotions will certainly contribute to that. Continuing to emphasize the seeds of civility will help in that direction as well. And we'll look to, within the individual school improvement plans, for strategies that are sort of grade-appropriate to supporting, moving the needle on that indicator. But I agree that that's, obviously, that's a critical indicator for us to have and to track. And 80%, we obviously want to exceed 80%, but we're setting that as a target because we haven't been able to reach that yet.
Just very specifically, just, and Christie can correct me if I'm wrong, but the direct Ruler Program impact on the kids in terms of their involvement with Ruler will not be occurring till the next school year. So this year is, last year was Windermere Learning, a Windermere group, core group learning about the Ruler Program. And then this year is now more of the larger faculty K-12 learning about it. So it's a, it's a commitment. So once we do all of the staff training and they start to augment how they go about doing things, the next school year, it'll be directly to the kids. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be an indirect impact. So for, while they're learning that Ruler thing and focusing on the SEL, as Oliver was stating, that should also be impacting what they're doing in the classroom with their kids, even if they're not getting the formal Ruler implementation this year.
Okay, understood.
Just a follow-up. I think that question masks how kids treat each other online versus in person. And getting to Carrie's point, I hope you'll make a note that we need to deal with that on both levels, right? The cyber
That's a great point.
Or digital citizenship, as well as the seeds of civility in an in-person environment.
Right. Yep, thank you.
And maybe the advisory meetings can help with that.
And it is of no, in our middle school and high school right now, there are children that are having challenges adjusting, coming back to school. So we're seeing a variety of behaviors that, pre-COVID, we haven't typically seen, especially this early in the school year. And so we're working with the administration, the teachers, to start making adjustments on that. So there's, there's some challenges that lay ahead, but we're recognizing them very early.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is under high-quality teaching and learning. Number seven, can you tell me what Hands Up is?
Oh, certainly. So Hands Up is a process at the middle school where grade-level teams go through the entire roster of all students in their grade. And the first round is literally Hands Up, meaning they read the name. And any teacher that has a concern about the engagement or wellness or academic progress of any student, as the name comes by, puts a hand up. That gets noted. Then the group goes back and explores what those concerns are, so they can strategize together, knowing that the student may have some, more success with some teachers or in some settings than others. And they collaborate and share strategies on working with that student. So that's going to work in cooperation with a data approach, where we're tracking data on student progress, not only the kind of insights and engagement of teachers around those kids.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment on that. I was involved in that Hands Up, and it really worked well. They did it in their teams, so there'd be five teachers, and the hand would go up if there was an issue. And then they would share if one teacher had a relationship with the student and understood what was going on, and maybe there was something going on in the child's life. And it was then able to be, you know, other teachers would be aware of it. And it really was a very good program for getting those kids, you know, actively involved in.
Another great thing about that approach is that it really requires them to go through every name. So any preconceptions or feelings or thoughts, even subconsciously, that teachers may have about certain students being the ones who need support or who act out the most, that goes away because you go down the list of all the students, or at least that's minimized, right? They have the opportunity to think objectively about each kid as the name comes up. So in relation to Carrie's point around distance learners or not, we're reading the list of all kids and looking objectively for the supports that might be needed.
I also just want to add that we don't want to make decisions about kids purely on the basis of quantitative results. And this does allow us to have some qualitative aspects to the evidence that we bring to bear to make decisions about kids.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barton. I believe, oh, yep, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, this is 2020 results. When do you, will you again do the survey, two students or two parents? Will it be just at the end of the school year?
No, we'll, we'll target getting a survey out by December or January at the latest. So we're doing a first round. But we want to take a little time to reflect on how useful the specific questions have been, and how, what strategies were developed in response to those answers, and then refine that before we put it out again.
And typically, how much percentage of people respond?
So the response rates varied during COVID, you know, they were lower than expected. We should be at least in the 90% of students, because they're a captive audience, so to speak, right? And staff, for that matter. For the parent responses, those vary. I think districts can do quite well, even in the 40% to 60% range, but we'd like to push higher than that.
Any other questions? I've been asked that we take just a five-minute break before we continue, so. I've been asked that we take just a five-minute break before we continue, so if anyone needs to. So we're just going to recess for five minutes.
Recession.
Recession?
I like recess.
Central Control, there we go. We're on.
Okay, thank you. We are reconvened at 8:13. The next item on the agenda is the September student enrollment. Mr. Greenlee.
Hey, everybody. Again, that's a preliminary. Five full-time graded numbers at elementary level. You also have class sizes there. What's interesting about this, this year is we did see a definite rebound in the number of students at the elementary level, up about 39, which is about 2.5% or so. And, but the enrollment at the 712 level, specifically at the 912 level, did fall about in the same amount. So we're actually net, right now, I believe, down three students from where we were last year. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Oh, Brian, how many students do we have currently who are homeschooled? We had 69 last year. Has that number decreased?
It has definitely decreased. I don't have the exact number for you off the top of my head. I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
Um, Jen?
Sorry.
Go ahead. And do we have any kind of strategy to deal with the large class sizes in grade six at the Lake and at Center School?
So, you know, what I would say there is, you know, those grades are a little bit older. Those class sizes are definitely higher than we want them to be. You know, I know we're monitoring it with the principals, but there's no specific request coming from them right now as for additional resources or anything like that.
Well, I know that we had reducing class sizes as a, a goal in the past. And are we still working on that idea? To reduce class, the numbers of students in class, class sizes?
Yeah, we, we do our best where we can. So, you know, like, for example, we use the flexible enrollment policy when that's available and, and we're able to do that. And so I, I know just today, you know, there was a family that would have gone, I think, to Center School that ended up getting assigned over to Windermere because the class sizes in the particular grades where those students were, were significantly smaller. So we do use the strategies that we have at our disposal, when disposal, when we can use them. But that's not foolproof either.
Is that something we can discuss during, as we bring up a budget concerns and put the budget together for next year?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Under, excuse me, under Center School, we have two classes, right, of 26, not three?
I apologize. Yes, it is two classes. They are 26 apiece. Yeah. Thank you for that correction.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. You can just stand right there and do the monthly finance.
All right. So we did talk a little bit about fiscal 2021 numbers before as reported to the Finance Committee. And there's, again, an action item for you later on to address those. I'm happy to answer any questions along those lines, but you've seen that for a long time now. For 2122, we still do have a healthy balance in there. One area where we're looking at is our encumbrances in the salary line items appear to be a little bit out of whack. And so we're going through those, digging through those to make sure that they are accurate. We're going to do that now that payroll's run for the second time, go through, verify that those encumbrances are correct. So that the next time we report out to you, we can have a better sense of where we stand overall.
Is that a technical term, out of whack?
Any questions other than Dr. Young? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Board liaison reports. Maddie, we'll start with you.
All right. So next Friday, October 1st, is already midway through quarter one at the high school. The ad drop period is now over, so everyone's schedules are stabilizing out and getting back into their routines. Spear Week is coming up at the end of October, which is going to lead into homecoming. And our open house is happening September 30th and there's going to be a lot of student participation. There's going to be live music from the jazz band and the treble chorus, I believe. There's also going to be like culinary stations. They're hosting two food stations. The OKP students are going to be doing live paintings. Our art students are going to be creating jewelry in the hallways and there's going to be a club fair. And dance and dance team and cheerleaders will also be performing. So it'll be a lot of different things going on. They're all really excited to show off their talents and different things that they're excited about for school. And typical fall events are also in full swing, so a lot of football games and marching band shows. And they're drawing out lots of student support, which is awesome to see. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do just want to say thank you for joining me on Monday. You did a great job and we, I think we highlighted a lot of fun things. And I look forward to having you back in May so we can recap how the year as a, the student representative to the board has gone.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, Gary, any updates from CREG?
Yes. Is it on, is this on? Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, CREG had their first really council meeting in two years where it was actually at the CREG office. So I went to that. And they basically just, the only thing that was new that, from that meeting was that they have Head Start, they started it last year, as three to five-year-olds. And this year, they have a Head Start program is, is really, I guess, doing quite well. And they do have a, I guess, a facility in Enfield that's close to us for Head Start program. If, you know, any parents are interested in the Head Start for CREG, okay? And it was, they were also talking about the, um, what they call residence, residency teacher program they have in, in, with their Hartford. Their Hartford, their Hartford residents who are now training to become teachers in Hartford in the CREG programs, in the different schools and things. So they were telling us that that's been very successful in recruiting residents for that. And there wasn't really anything really that I learned in the meeting that affected us at this time. But they are having difficulties getting bus drivers and, and substitutes and things just along same lines we are. And other districts are in quite bad shape, worse than us, so as far as recruiting. So I think we got, you know, by having our HR person, I think that's helped us to get more applicants to be interviewed and things than, than some of these other. Because I was asking some of these other districts if they had a HR person and some said, well, we were thinking about it. And, and I think having a HR person is helping us to get more recruits and, and, you know, more of a, a selection before other towns. Okay?
Thank you. Marcia?
Um, yes, Center School had their open house last night, so I reached out to Mike Vee. And this is what he reported. He said Center School had an excellent open house filled with inquisitive parents. Classroom teachers met with parents for 30 minutes to discuss many of the exciting opportunities kids will have this year. And after that, parents had the opportunity, they wanted to visit our gymnasium for a gallery walk to meet with support sta, and to meet with support staff. The math team, reading team, special ed team, support service team, art team, music team, physical education staff, each set up a table to share how they positively impact Center School. And it was a huge success. He was real excited about that.
Excellent. Thank you. Carrie, any updates?
Windermere had open house last night. I didn't go because I was at the meeting, but I did. I did, uh, I did get a question from a couple of parents regarding, which I guess I'll have to look into, the second step class, which is once a week. And there were questions regarding the social issues, learning piece, and if this was some form of critical race theory. But I don't, I don't know. I don't know. But I got a question from Windermere parent, to Windermere parents after, after that. So I don't, I don't really know. But as far as I know, the open house went well, other than the two inquiries I got about that. Sorry.
Okay, our second step.
Program is going to be replaced by Ruler. So it is an SEL curriculum that is used throughout the elementary schools, which has been used for years. It's a little outdated, but we do, you, the, the teachers do pull from some of the curriculum. It has nothing to do with CRT. It's. has nothing to do with CRT. It's specifically just an SEL program.
Okay. I just know that must have been talked about at the, at the open house with some of the parents, so I will let them know.
Yeah, and if they want to follow up directly with me and just give me a call and ask me the more specific questions about what they learned, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Angie, anything?
Oh, we have Color Run coming up too, Windermere.
Okay.
Color Run.
When is that?
When is that? Hold on. Color Run is going to be, I don't know, I can't keep track of everything. Oh, Color Run is going to be October 15th at Ellington High School at 5:30.
Well, that's fun.
Okay.
Is it just, I think, is it just Windermere? It's all three schools?
I don't know. Did he say anything about Center School doing Color Run, Marcia?
I just thought.
Not mention it. I think it's just, it's just Windermere. It's a PTO thing.
It's a PTO.
Yeah, oh, just Windermere, okay.
Well, I know, I just didn't know.
They did it before. It's super fun.
Yeah, they did it a couple of years ago.
It's super fun. Scott was there with his son.
He ran.
Now he's officially going to be there.
Do you have to run?
No, you can, like, walk around and they throw these colors out. You should go.
It's really fun. It's really fun.
The committee again.
Can I have the first couple?
Okay, sorry, we got to keep going so we don't get to the nine o'clock. Liz, any, sorry, Dr. Young, okay, thank you. Liz, go ahead.
Okay, finance. Well, we have Michael Picaro as the chair, and he has two, two vice chairs, one is a Republican and one is a Democrat. He had a lot of items on the agenda for the first meeting, but the important, one of the important things was that they approved to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. I guess they had no specific rules of order, so they did adopt that. They have the American Rescue Plans. They talked about the funds for the American Rescue Plan, at which point Mike stated that the town should reach out to the Board of Education to see if there is need to combine funds, so that was, that was good for us. As far as contracting was something that they, government contracting and getting more people to, to put in bids for projects at the town level and maybe offer some type of a how-to-apply with the town. And I don't, they want to be able to get some more contractors to give bids instead of having the same people apply and getting information out to them. We also, this is about Anita Yost, they did talk about how she and Felicia LaPlante and Tiffany Pignotaro worked together to develop the infant vision so that it's the same program that we use for the accounting system. And they find that this is going to be very helpful to them at the town level, and they're very grateful to Anita for giving her time and helping to get that set up for them. It was a busy meeting, and I think that's probably the most important that we have to know about.
Thank you. Chris?
There's nothing really new for CAVE. Just if you plan to go to the convention, the CAVE CAPS convention, please register as soon as possible.
Thank you. Miriam? Jen? Okay. Onto action items. Second read of the revised policy, 1110.1.
I move that upon, I move that the board, I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 1110.1, communications with the public as presented.
Second. Seconded by Liz. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 4118.11, nondiscrimination as presented.
Second. Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 4212.42, requirements for school bus drivers as presented.
Second. Seconded by Liz. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon, sorry, I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 5113, attendance, excuses, dismissal as presented.
Second. Who is that, sorry?
Marcia.
Marcia, seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 5113.2, truancy as presented.
Second.
5131.
5113.2.
No, 5131.
No.
5113.2, truancy.
511.
Second.
Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 5131.911, bullying as presented.
Second. Seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee, the board hold a second and final vote to adopt the Ellington Public Schools' policy 0200, goals and objectives as presented.
Second. Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Now Chris is done, so we need some help this year.
Move that the Board of Education approve and accept of the Next Gen Personal Finance Grant in the amount of $10,000 for the purposes of improving the...
No, we're on, sorry, we're, oh, yes, sorry. Beg your pardon, I'm on the wrong one.
...finance course at Ellington High School.
Second. My apologies, it was seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
Move that the Board of Education approve, as recommended by the Finance Committee, the final expenditures and transfers and to finalize the Board of Education's operating budget for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $40,123,935.19 with the request of the town to appropriate $300,000 of the unexpended balance of $142,100, nope, $492,181.81 to the medical reserve account.
Second. Seconded by Miriam. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
Move that the Board of Education approve the request of the town of Ellington for uses of the American Rescue Plan State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds or other applicable federal or state grants as presented by administration, with projects generally applied towards supporting the public health response in screening, in screen testing and ventilation improvements.
Second. Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
Move that the Board of Education accept with regret and best wishes the personnel retirement request of Anita Yost, Coordinator of Accounting, effective December 3rd, 2021.
Second. Wow, that was, that, I don't even know, that was, I guess it was Miriam, Miriam, you're going to get that one second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Move that the Board of Education approve the District Improvement Plan 2021/22 as presented.
Second. Seconded by Jen. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously.
Jen?
Yes.
Did we do number six?
Yes, we did.
You did? That was...
We wanted to interrupt you.
Sorry.
If you were, if someone pages... I will miss you.
Any older new business to discuss? Correspondence, I did want to let everyone know that we received a letter from the State Board of Education, pretty much saying, thanks for all your hard work. That letter, we, don't, okay, are you going to send it out to, you gave it to everybody in their packet?
To the packet.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Along with that, we received correspondence from Jacob Dorville about urging mask wearing in the schools. Emily Swindells about the lack of mask wearing at the August meeting. Maureen Armstrong about the lack of mask wearing in the August meeting. Deb Griffin, who passed on an article about masks not being harmful for children, which I passed along to everyone. Kenneth Bujold about mask effectiveness and language development, and then a retraction of a journal article in JAMA Pediatrics. And lastly, Jason Joseph Biak, who thanked the board for their efforts and offered additional links to additional information regarding masks. Roundtable, anyone else have anything?
Jen, if I could just reiterate that I would like to see a meeting put on the books for Wednesday.
There will be, yes, there will be a special meeting that everyone will be notified about for next Wednesday to make the decision or discuss the decisions on masking for, after September 30th.
In my understanding, if, if necessary, if necessary, so I think, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is...
The 29th?
If the governor provides, if the governor leaves it up to the local districts to make a decision on masking, if the powers aren't extended or something like that, then we're going to have to meet a special meeting and make a decision. But if the powers are extended and the mask mandate continues...
There's no need for a meeting.
There'll be no meeting.
Everybody hear that, got that? Okay.
Do you have the time in, Mar?
I'm, I didn't, but I'm thinking 5:30, 6 o'clock, what works for everyone? Next Wednesday, 5:30 or 6:00? Any?
6:00.
6:00?
Please.
Okay, 6 o'clock, next Wednesday. Just hold it.
I just want to understand why we have so many people here without masks on. Aren't they required to wear masks in the school building?
No, they're not.
They're not?
No, so the executive order from the Commissioner of Department of Public Health dated August 7th, if you look at the email and you click on that, the actual mandate is when students are in school and school's in session. So there's no mask mandate that has been done for all buildings outside of the school timeframe.
I just sent it to you, Liz, too, so you have it.
What?
I just sent you the, the link to the memo, so you have it. You're welcome.
But in the spirit of the mandate, we did request it.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Wow, seconded by Miriam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Whoa!
Aye, opposed, same.
No motions except that one.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
That was like gun trigger.